Okay, we'll call this meeting to order April twenty second at seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Booth, will you give the opening?
Yes. Dear Lord, we pray that you give us the wisdom and guidance and the temperance and strength to be the work for the city of Nelsonville with benefits of the citizens of our city. In your name we pray.
I ask everyone turn off or turn down your cell phones, please. Wait your friend. Please call the roll when you're ready. Here.
Mr. Booth.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Sonnick. Mr. Dumpy. Mr. Flowers.
Here.
Mr. Taylor.
Here. Motion to excuse Ms. Sonnick, Mr. Dumpy. Salute. Second. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Long.
Yes. Did everyone receive the minutes from the last meeting on April eighth? Any corrections or additions? Motion to accept the minutes. Salute.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah.
Mr. Booth.
Yes. Okay, and I believe we have an auditor's treasures report tonight.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to go to the treasures report first. First page. Total funds at not been at six million, five hundred fifty-five thousand, eighty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents, of which on the next page, three million, eight hundred seventy-nine thousand, seventy-nine sixty dollars and twenty-four cents are total invested funds. As you see, the FSCV change, so as you can sure, it was March twenty-seventh, now been redeposited at a much higher rate of five point four one percent, previously three point five percent. That's good news. Turn over to the next page. And the other page is just my opinion, right, association of which you found.
Any questions for the treasurer?
I do. So we have a piece of legislation on for tonight to allow farmers to participate in our cause for.
Quick point of order. With the roll call being taken and assured identity, I have several documents from the court, the Athens County Clerk of Courts that have to be passed out. Do that real quick, please.
I'm sorry, could you wait till citizens' comments to do this?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, let's wait till citizens' comments. Thank you. They're doing the auditor's report right now.
No, no, no.
Well, I can, you guys can continue as I pass these out. This is all.
I'm sorry, your honor, your meeting, please. The auditor has some more.
Go ahead, pass. Yes, pass them out, thank you.
I do apologize, everyone.
I think you're disrupting public meetings, Molly.
No, it's not disrupting. He's just passing out.
Order, order, please.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so back to our agenda, the Nelsonville City Auditor's Report from March two thousand twenty-four. Thank you for having us, the city council, the city manager, and citizens, residents, employees in attendance. This report is for March two thousand and twenty-four. So in March two thousand twenty-four, the city's expenses slightly outpaced revenues. You can see the numbers there. Revenues from March, nine hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred fifty-five dollars, expenses coming in at nine hundred eighty-six thousand. Both of those, again, I say this every month, I'll say it for quite a long time from now, while we're doing a lot of work in town, both of those numbers much higher than usual because of pass-through funds from federal and state agencies for things like our sewer project, water project, heater project, Canal Street project upcoming, Rock Hollow project, Burrow, and the many other projects that we are doing at City Hall every day. Major fund balances here at March's end, all funds combined, six million, four hundred forty-six thousand, five hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. You see the general fund coming in just over one million dollars. Combined street funds, six hundred and three thousand dollars. Those are a little bit deceiving because over three hundred and fifty thousand has been committed to the Canal Street, Burrow, and Broad Hollow projects as matching funds to the multimillion dollar projects. So available in those funds is a little bit lower. Capital fund, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars higher than this time last year. In fact, all of these funds re higher than this time last year. The water funds, one point nine million with about a half a million in project funds in there that we just wrote out in the last few weeks. Sewer fund, nine hundred seventy-six thousand. All of those at the goal set for them five years ago and for months.
Good. That's a question.
Yes.
Those figures right there of the sewer fund and the water fund.
Yes.
Are those money that's come in from people paying their bills on the sewer and water?
Yes, so water and sewer fund are proprietary funds coming from water and sewer rates, assessments, penalties, tap funds, tap fees, I mean, anything having to do with water and sewer separately. So that's why I said in the water fund, about half a million of those is actually project money. So the OWDA, a state agency working on water projects, sent us a tranche of funds to spend on our water project, which we spent out.
So is that where some of that money came?
Yes.
Is some of that money in there?
Yes, so of the one point nine in the water fund, about a half a million, I think it was five hundred fifty-three thousand is OWDA funds.
And that's all the holes they're digging in town.
That's right. That's right. So we use, we actually don't use the sewer fund as a pass-through. We do use the water fund as a pass-through for the water projects.
And the sewer fund is used for repairs?
Mm-hmm. The sewer fund runs the sewer plant, the lift stations that brings all the gunk down to the plant, salaries, anything to keep the sewer system running. Not the storm system, though. A lot of cities get themselves into the trouble. They use their sewer funds for storm sewer. And though those words are very similar, in the eyes of the state, they're very different. So you have to have different funds for storm.
But what is the difference?
It is.
I said, what is the difference?
Oh, 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 what is the difference? Well, the sewer is bringing everything from your shower and your toilets. The storm is bringing the rain. Though the system operates similarly, and there might be some benefits to using those funds, the state just doesn't allow it.
But they don't flow at the same time.
Correct. We're not supposed to. Every now and then we find, we find lines from two hundred, far too long ago. But that's a lot of work we're working on. We've got the statement of cash position. Council, you have a paper copy of this, so you can see at larger, but this restates the information I just gave you with the highlights of the major funds. This is all thirty-three of the city's funds, as well as total, with a breakdown of money brought in and spent out. Next up, we have the credit card report as required by the state of Ohio. These are the transactions on the city credit cards for the March statements. Pretty slow month back here. You see the payment for Cisco, Menards, Microsoft, Galls, with an explanation below. Cisco is for software for workers' comp training, Menards for lumber, park materials, as well as one police department charge, I believe, for Menards. And Microsoft, for citywide Microsoft accounts, emails, leasing uniforms, below that, and so on and so forth. That's the end of the really dense part of my report. I've got a few reports just from my office. Income tax filings were due on April fifteenth is the twenty seconds. So if you have not filed and you had taxable income, please do so. It is required if you have taxable income. If you're retired, disabled, or have non-taxable income, you can file for an exemption, which we can help you with, and you never have to worry about us ever again. We'd be happy to help you with that. I wanted to ask council for their verbal support through a motion. I'd like to take part in a program this year to be the first, as far as I can tell, in many years of the city, to go after non-filing as well as tax-abating accounts in the city. There are accounts in the city. I can't express which ones. We have state confidentiality rules on taxation information that are just purely ignoring city income tax rules and regulations, and they certainly owe the city as well as their neighbors their income tax on their taxable income. It would be done in conjunction with the Regional Income Tax Agency. It has a cost of one dollar, one dollar per non-filer or entity reached out to. The first contact with them is actually free. The second contact is one dollar. A lot of bang for your buck, in my opinion. But I looked through the code. I don't see a place where I would need council's authority to administer that program. But in the interest of consensus and also sending a message that we take this importance and value fair, equitable tax collection, I would ask council's support or opinion on starting this program, non-filer programs.
We never went to the third step. What's with the third step?
The third step is unfortunately administrative subpoenas and civils. Just every city and village in the state of Ohio has the right to sue a person for abating their taxes if they drag it out long enough. I believe the rate of success is, it's almost universal before that step. Because, of course, it's cheaper to pay your income tax than to.
I've heard of, I've heard of attaching driver's licenses and stuff when people don't come up with it. In other words, when your driver's license expires, you can't renew it until you pay your income tax?
I.
Probably illegal, but I mean, I've heard of that.
We, yeah, we don't do it here. I, I heard of that for mayor's court, but it wouldn't impact anybody's driving.
That would be rough right now for you to make your license.
You can get a what?
An eight-year license.
Only if you're young.
I'd mind the eight-year license.
How many non-filers are we looking at here?
Well, it's just under a hundred. It's not hundreds, but it probably is an important portion of the tax base. Of course, it helps us keep our tax rates low, fair and equitable when everybody's paying. So at some point, we've got to make a serious push on these folks to take part in the community they live in. And by the way, the civil, the civil, I should say, it sounds very scary, the civil portion is the last step. The first steps involve outreach, working with regional income tax agencies, in-house attorneys, and letters. Many, many, many sessions.
I'd like to make the motion to ask the auditor's office to pursue going after the people who don't file taxes at the city as they should.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Mr. Flower.
Yes.
Mr. Ham.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, city council. I should reiterate, I don't think I said it. If you are an individual who just doesn't know the tax laws and you're retired, you're on a tax one, no, this is not the intent of this program. It's for folks who are making, you know, a measurable amount of money, maybe even significant, who are just abating tax filing. I don't want this to sound scarier than it is. For one dollar, how scary is it? Yes.
Can you do that same thing for people with their rental that doesn't pay their?
I could certainly see. I could certainly see. I don't have the answer today. I'm sorry.
You have a copy of your report again.
I do.
Thank you.
I do, yeah. A couple of other quick updates, and then I will get the heck out of the way for more important folks in the media. Income tax revenues were up eleven percent in twenty-three. We reported that at the council in February, I believe. So far in two thousand twenty-four, they are up twelve point six five percent compared to this time last year. That's good, especially considering the burdens on our finances from inflation and other items. The last thing I wanted to say was a quick budget update. We're seeing a lot of news from other, in fact, it was brought to my attention twice today about peer cities and villages similar to the city facing things like hiring freezes, cuts. There's some very close neighbors of ours having serious conversations about their general fund. I wanted to make sure, because I, especially since I got two questions today, that to say that the city of Nelsonville is not in that position. The general fund is not, we are not having that same conversation, and it's not just because the conversation isn't where it is. It's just because our finances simply look different. Many of those entities can't speak to all the things their revenues and expenses are doing, but for us, we are not in that position. I did want to say that the general fund was estimated to be in a surplus of two thousand, five hundred fifty dollars. That's out of over a two million dollar budget, was before several large expenses already well discussed in this room and well covered in the media. So that does tell us that the general fund, which I consider, and I think most folks in government finance, would consider the beating heart of a municipal operation. It's, it's strong, it's growing, and it's funding City Hall, but it's not, I don't want to say, you know, you're doing great, but we're not buying houses in Hampton. I don't know what a good metaphor is. So two thousand, five hundred fifty out of two million dollars spent, to me, speaks for itself in the numbers. Maybe a metaphor isn't necessary. I just, I wanted to make sure to say, though, that with inflationary costs and pressures on revenues in the coming years, our neighbors are probably sending us important signals about what's happening to the economy, what's happening in revenue. I just read today that credit card defaults are at all-time highs since the financial crisis in two thousand and eight. It doesn't mean the sky's falling, doesn't even necessarily mean bad news for us, but I want to make sure, as the city's financial advisor, that I say that we want to make sure to keep a fiscal conservative fiscal mind, be safe with our expenses, be safe with our carryover, and make sure that we're not having these conversations like our neighbors in two thousand and twenty-four, five, or six, because it's, well, frankly, my duty bound to make sure that our funds are safe and growing in future years. But also, I believe, it's the council's responsibility to keep those attitudes in mind and keep expenses efficient and revenues growing. Want to make sure to say that. I keep getting a lot of questions. They say, I don't want to name other cities because they don't, we've got reporters and others who do all the reporting for us on those areas, but our neighbors, yes, there are some very tough budget discussions going on elsewhere. The city is currently in a safe financial place, but let's not get carried away. Maybe that's the short. Any questions? Yeah?
Could you define pass-through funds?
Yeah. So pass-through funds, as I would define it, is when the state or federal agency grants the city funds for a project, and it's always project-specific. It's never, it's never just whatever we want to spend it on. So, for example, like the USDA issues funds to help build our sewer system right now. What happens is we actually have to do the work first, show the work through invoices and, and a whole bunch of things that our city engineer has to prove as well to that agency. And then the USDA issues those funds back to us. Some agencies will send it first, and then we'll write the check out. But generally speaking, pass-through means we're doing the work and the money's coming from another place and just passing through. Does that make sense?
You don't keep it?
That's right. That's right. Yeah, so the, so it's always for a project. So USDA said, this is going, this five million's going to your sewer project. So over time, they will give it in tranches out to us and say, here's a half a million, keep building, here's a half a million, keep building.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yeah, we have to do an addition. Motion to accept the treasurer's report. Salute. Second.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Flower.
Oh, yes.
Okay, motion to accept the auditor's report. Salute. Second.
Lawson.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Yes.
Flower.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, there is no mayor's court report. So moving on to citizens' comments. Yes.
He has a hearing problem.
Okay, citizens' comments, please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Glenn Smith. I'm a citizen and a resident of this community. I'm here tonight to address a controversy that's occurred in this community concerning Polly Field at the silly park. I took a drive down there one night, and I noticed that people were constructing a baseball diamond on Polly Field. I didn't know, and I see no notice in the paper, had no opportunity to comment on it. And I just want to comment on that and urge council to reconsider and to do something to stop this tragedy. There's no practical reason to convert that football field into baseball diamonds. There are four, one, two, three, four baseball diamonds at that park that are in good condition, well-maintained, with dugouts. Plenty of opportunity. Plus, there is crab tree filled over here. To do so negates the function of football in this community. That's the only football field in this community. And people go down there and play touch football, they kick field goals, they play on the fields, church groups go there. It completely negates, it wipes out football. It makes the whole park, half of that park and more, is all baseball diamonds already. So what you're doing is turning the Nelsonville City Park just into a big baseball diamond. Any other sport excluded, it's a tack on football, which I believe is a pretty important sport. The other reason that this is a real problem is that this field involves a legacy and history of this community at the deepest level. It involves the legacy of Nelsonville High School, Nelsonville York High School, and the veterans and war heroes's community. It was named in honor of Richard Polly, who gave his life and died in Vietnam and who was perhaps one of the greatest football players and athletes of this community. And it was named after him, plus all other war veterans who gave their lives for this country. So this is a memorial, honor field that's set up as a monument and memorial to these veterans and these war heroes, and it should not be damaged like that, just like that. With no notice of this community to come in here and comment on such an important thing as this. So that many people care about this. Many people are deeply upset about this and care about this. So I urge council that you need to, first of all, instruct the city manager and tell the people down there to cease all activities on Polly Field until this issue is fairly resolved for the people of this community. Because, as I say, there was no practical necessity for it. Even if there was, even if there, some, say the existing fields were contaminated with soil or something, and there was no place to play baseball, even under those circumstances, to completely wipe out the history of Polly Field. Nelsonville Football Team played football on that field and down there since, I believe, the late or early nineteen hundred. That is the home field of the Nelsonville York Buckeyes in nineteen eighty-one that won the only state championship. It's the first place that the Nelsonville York Buckeyes played. It involves over three decades of the Nelsonville York Buckeyes playing there, the sixty, seventies, and eighties. So this is a grossly unjust decision. And I think council, I don't know the whole how this came about and everything, many people don't, but I think you're betraying this community to let this valuable asset be destroyed this way. But you at least need to just say, stop it now, let's take a look at this, let's examine this, because as I understand it, I was recording, but WAIS News, Mark Hunter made the comment that they're planning to build another field. And as I say, the Nelsonville City Park is not just about baseball. The temporary transits down there that are down there now, they're going to play baseball for a couple of months. Then it's all over. And then what about the improvements that's going on down there? There was a track put around the field, hammers up so that the police and the community can see what's going on, lights, the community action agency. The Community Action Agency donated tons of money to build sidewalks, makes improvements. This is for the whole community. This is not just for the baseball team. This is for the citizens of Nelsonville, the entire community. So I I want to ask council, reconsider this, get public comments, and because this is a tragedy and it's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
All right. My name's Neil Summers. I'm a Nelsonville resident. And I'm here to also talk about Polly Field. And I I will be more than happy to answer any questions because some statements were just untrue that were made. I am a two-time combat veteran. I'm a lifetime member of the VFW across the street, and I'm good friends with Carl Polly. Who I reached out to before any dirt was moved down there to put on a baseball field, and he was excited to give the kids a place to go. Now, I'm going to ask everybody in the room, tell me one thing we've got in this town for kids to go do in the summertime to keep them out of trouble.
Baseball.
Some pool.
We've got the pool, and we all know who hangs out right outside the pool.
What, three?
You tell me one thing. And I'm going to tell you this. I've worked with troubled kids my entire life. I've been a foster parent for therapeutic foster kids. I've worked for seventeen years at the juvenile fraternal facility right down the road. The number one thing for racism and crime for kids is boredom. You can look across this country, and every small town has an issue with drugs. Every small town, Nelsonville's not an exception to that. One thing we got going is we take the kids out, we give them something to do. We give them positive role models. We give them a ball and a bat, we teach them to have fun. Right there by adding another field, not all the fields down there are in great shape. We bought a, two floods in one week. One field we might not get back this summer. We've had people on the baseball committee for Nelsonville York Youth League put in eighty hours down there working after they put in their day jobs for free, getting those fields ready so we can host a full day of over five hundred people coming to Nelsonville on a Saturday. We want to talk about tourism? What better way to get people to come to Nelsonville? Last year during our icebreaker, a opening baseball tournament, we represented thirty seven communities. Nelsonville hosts thirty seven communities in its town. The only other thing in the city of Nelsonville bringing in tourism like that is the train station. You want to talk about bringing in revenue and bringing in people? Well, I lied. I'm sorry. Hey, we've got another great one right down the road, Outboard Ventures, and the water. Other than that, I don't know really anything else that does it.
What do you have existing fields? Do we not need additional fields?
That is not true.
No, that is.
Hold on a second. They just dedicated.
Basically.
Sir, I gave you.
This is not, this is not.
I gave you your time. The reason why we added another field is we have more eight U kids and ten U kids coming out for baseball than what we've had in the past. We have a T-ball field that's in disarray that we're going to be lucky to get back up this summer, all right? That takes us down to three fields. Now, we have one field dedicated to softball, and we play ten U on it. We have one field dedicated to T-ball, and we have one field dedicated to twelve U. We put in an eight U and a ten U field so we can compensate for the kids that are coming out and playing. Now, we want to talk about future generations in Nelsonville citizens. It's the kids. The only thing that field was being used for was for animals to defecate on. And you could go down there for the past two years, and that's the only thing happening down there is one, dogs off their leashes, and I don't know what the city ordinance is on that, and scat. And I can prove to you because I stepped in it this Saturday, and there's a sign down there telling you that you need to pick up your dog's scat, and it doesn't happen down there. But what does happen down there is we've got future generations in Nelsonville, kids having fun, staying out of trouble, and becoming close with their fellow classmates, and they've got great adults to look up to. That's not a negative thing. And we want to talk about football. The high school put in a football field for the kids out there. My son plays football. We haven't played a game on that field down there in two years. It might even been three. It's three years. They haven't had practice on that field in three years.
Absolutely.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, I I think you, I think you might be missing what Glenn's point was. His was more of an emotional, I believe.
I don't, I don't agree with that.
Let me finish, please. And I think that was, because I lived the era that Glenn lived, I knew Richard and everybody, and and I think his is more an emotional thing, and I wanted to ask you, what's the matter with Crabtree? Couldn't that have been taken care of a little bit better?
Hey, so, so what was talking Crabtree Field? That's not our field.
I mean, I'm sure that's.
A junior high, the junior high baseball team is utilizing that field.
Right.
That that's who gets to use.
You mean only one?
One. And and I'm not.
It's one field.
It's one field. Not three, one baseball field.
No, what I mean is, they don't play.
Well, here's, here's the other thing, too. You've got to look at each, at each age level. The pitching mound is a certain distance and the base is a certain.
Okay.
Everybody that is on our committee donates their time. The city of Nelsonville used to pay a salary to somebody that did what we do for free. And the only money used down there was what the city gave. Right now, our committee has raised over twenty thousand dollars and invested over twenty thousand dollars on Polly Fields. That's more than the city of Nelsonville.
And that could still be used for football.
And and yeah, let me go back to that. So the way that was constructed, and we're not putting in a second baseball field. That, I don't know where that came from. Because we purposely constructed that baseball diamond so at any point you can remove the, a homerun fence, throw stripes down, and play a football game.
Is to do that at the sixties?
Yeah.
Professional.
Pro footballs do it, and it's the reason why it has a grass in it. And and we're going to talk, I want to go back to that emotional attachment. That field's named after Carl Polly's brother. I've called Carl Polly twice.
Excuse me, Richie Polly was not Carl Polly's brother.
What, what does he? Anyhow, Carl Polly is happy that it's being used.
I don't think you should be speaking for somebody that's not here. Anthony Polly put on the internet. You did not consult Polly's family.
I take.
You are, you are lying.
I talked.
Hold on, sir.
This man told me a lie.
Hold on. This is not a debate. Okay, I think the information's. How long does he get to go before I get a rebuttal?
You don't get a rebuttal, sir.
Well, he's talked for half an hour.
Okay, so I just. But I'm going to, I'm going to finish it with this. You can go down there and play baseball at any time. You can remove the baseball outfield net, homerun, and play football at any time, and I guarantee you it's getting more use and kids are having more fun than allowing the grass to grow and animals to defecate on. And for heaven's sakes, let's give our kids something fun to do and stay out of trouble. I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is any rebuttal allowed?
No, sir.
Uh, any other citizens' comments?
Sir, I can talk to you anytime you want. I'll give you my phone number.
Nice.
Go ahead.
I don't believe a woman up here with three minutes only, and I am. Last Joanne LaRue. Last council meeting, I asked why we were no longer getting any of the code enforcement reports. I still don't see the code enforcement officer. And I checked with him this week, and he mentioned one of the things up on Madison Avenue. You know that nice new market they've got up there? The man applied for a garage permit. Now, I got to tell you, the market's really in a nice addition, but you've got business. You're the business.
Representative neighborhood.
Yeah. Number two, and this just came because I was wondering, the gentleman that came from out of town, what was the paperwork that was served? Is that open to us to know what it was?
I don't read the, I don't.
Does it have a title?
Sorry, I was paying attention to the agenda. I'll look at it after. I have an idea what it is.
Mine says it's a summons.
He says it's a summons from?
From Josh Brown. Turn me along.
Okay, thank you.
Any other citizens' comments?
I'm Alexa Ross. A few, a couple of years ago, I noticed the new electric charges in town. I have an electric car. I was very excited about it. And I presume most of you do not drive electric, so these beautiful machines on our streets actually don't work. It says available, and I have plugged in over and over in both machines. One has been out over a year. The other one, less than a week. It is, well, the first one said it is now on ninety nine hours of charging. You cannot charge because it is occupied by a non-existent consumer. So now these two, which I heard the council, you know, compliment as a tourist attraction or a benefit, they don't work. They look beautiful, but I wonder if you have any management or service funds? Or is this a white elephant that will never be?
Do you know that there's one over by the store?
I do.
And I've seen that.
Yes.
So you said one of them has been out for a year?
Yes.
Have you mentioned anything to the city manager? Because that's news to me. I didn't know you had that.
No.
We have known those problems. Me and Taylor have been emailing back and forth with the company. They've had a service guy appear seven or eight times, Nikki Thomas, and it'll say available, and then two days later it says in use.
Yes, it says available.
We actually just emailed them back last Thursday, Friday. It's about that. Didn't know the second one was down, but there was, there has been an issue with the one closest to it.
Well.
Closest to the.
I will test them anytime. I have receipts to do it, so I hope.
Yeah, we can reach out.
And I I just wonder if the council of governments, if you moved ahead and we might save the recycling center.
Okay, any other citizens' comments?
Hello, y'all. Guy Canair. I live in but lifelong Nelsonville area resident, father of children in the Nelsonville School District. My oldest is thirty, my youngest is eleven. About baseball fields, I don't know. I've been down that field my whole life, whole life. Three years ago, three years ago, the Nelsonville Baseball League, the nine, ten, eleven, twelve, you had four years of baseball age boys. There was two teams, two teams from nine to twelve. We had twelve-year-olds playing with nine-year-olds to try and make two teams. I don't know if you all seen Saturday, if anyone went down to the park Saturday and seen the crowd. I mean, there hasn't been a crowd like that down there probably since Friday nights when Nelsonville York played their last time in football game. So I can't believe, you know, it's a park, and all these people coming from out of town, from Gloucester, from Athens, from Corning, Perry County, are coming to Nelsonville all day, going back to businesses, spending money in Nelsonville. The Nelsonville is in better shape in the last three months than I've seen it since I've been a child. I mean, three years ago, we had to walk the football field, pick needles up, let alone dog crap, but literally pick needles up before the children could play football. It was a safety item. And I can't believe that any, anybody from Nelsonville would actually raise cane about children playing ball down at the ball fields. Like Neil said, want to play football on it? High fire job. Take the fence down, they play football. Church groups can still come and use it. Anybody who wants to use it can use it. It's a park. So that's all I have. The committee is doing a wonderful job. The city come to, come to a couple of people in the community, said they want, that Nelsonville wants to be done with it. They don't want to be liable for it. And this committee's come, was made up out of that reason, and it's never ran so quick, it's never ran so better. If these, all these children want to play baseball this year in Nelsonville, it would be down in Athens, playing sandlot, where everybody's played the last fifteen years because Nelsonville record has become so bad. So now there's four or five people taking pride. You know, once you get two or three people doing it, you always want to have people come in, and that's what's happening. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? All right, moving on to business and organizational comments. I believe Haley Cox is here. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I have extras too, if anybody else comes to the classroom down. There's a couple extras. Okay, I am Kaylee Cox. As you said, I live in town. I've lived in Nelsonville for about ten years. I teach middle school at Logan. My husband teaches at Nelsonville High School. But I recently was awarded a fellowship through the Foundation for Appalachia, Ohio, to live and work in Appalachia for five years. I know you're still older than that, but we were awarded these fellowships to do leadership projects outside of our educational situation, so it can be connected to the school that I teach in. And I'm really passionate about reading and writing and building a culture around that in my classroom. Because I, as someone who grew up playing sports and really valued sports, I'd also coached for the last twelve years at schools all over Athens County, Galle County. But I see the culture that is built around sports, and I want to see the same thing for things like reading and writing and literature and literacy for my students that I have in class every day. So part of my project for the Foundation of Appalachia, Ohio, through that is this Appalachia Literary Arts Storytelling Festival that will be happening in October on the square. And I have my permit, and I have to turn it in if there's one part, and I'm trying to figure out what it means when I'm getting there, so I'll have that there as well. But basically, what this festival, you can see who our committee is. It's myself, a poet from Hocking County. Her name's Janine Fuller. Breanna Johnson is another fellow. She also teaches at the middle school with me, and then Aaron Walker, who teaches in Galle County. I taught with him there when I taught high school. But there's a map in here on the page that says about this festival, and there's a bigger one on the next page that I drew kind of rudimentarily, but all the places that are shaded in are places around the square that have already agreed to be part of the festival in some way. So my vision for the festival is to make it as lively and interactive as possible so that storytelling is something that anybody can participate in, from my own two and four-year-olds to, you know, whoever the oldest person in southeast Ohio is. So if you think about, if any of you have been to a conference or something where you walk down the hallway and each room is a different topic, that's sort of what I'm envisioning the square as being. So you can walk outside on the square with lovely live music and storytelling circles and. So you can walk outside on the square with, you know, the live music and storytelling circles and, um, opportunities to write your own poem, pin it to a, a wall or something that we have. Um, but then you can also step into Stewart's, and there's going to be photography exhibits from school districts across Southeast Ohio. Um, and go into New Week, and they're going to host some author reading for people sharing things that they've written and published. Uh, you can go into the Thirty Public Space, and there's going to be some workshops around different types of storytelling and invisible ground and Read Appalachia, and all these great podcasts that we have, um, talking about history, um, and preserving those types of things through storytelling in different modes. Um, there's a lot of things, and if you kind of put through this, you can see what they are. Stuart's Author House has donated their entire space for Creed. Um, and they're also going to host a Story Slam in our kind of headliner, who's Roger May, he's the photographer. The person in charge of the Looking for Appalachia project. If you've seen that online, if you have it, you should check it out. It's really awesome. Um, I talked about Thirty Public. The Nelsonville Public Library is also partnering with us and hosting a bunch of the events for kids under eighteen, but also some things for adults too. Um, the Nelsonville Elks is having a Hocking Hills Book Fair, so the Elks will be involved with book fair and the, for authors. Majestic Galleries is going to have, uh, exhibits in there all around storytelling with visual arts.
If, if I could just interject something, you passed over, I mean, you said Monday Creek?
Yes, Monday Creek.
Yeah, I work with Gina.
Oh.
And, and we're going to have forty authors going book signing there.
Yes.
So I just wanted.
Yeah, yeah. I actually have a call with her later this week, so all I knew was that she had the date, so that's awesome. I'm glad that you, that you know that. Um, the mine, I, we talked with them briefly, and there's still details being finalized, but they're going to, um, do some live music on the square evening after the Story Slam with Reverend Stewart. Um, so basically, over the last two years, I've walked around town a lot with my kids, and I just love all the artsy things that we have going around in town. And I just have this vision of bringing everybody together around the same thing. Um, Nailein Maker Studio is already participating in this multi-state shop hop, which I had no idea what that was. But I guess there are three full tour buses coming to town. They're traveling a tri-state area and going to twelve different quilt shops. So they're all going to be coming from Nelsonville that day. Um, and she was like, yeah, she was like, they're all going to have a story to tell. The perfect place for them to come.
That's great.
Um, and then there was a discussion about whether we wanted to have food trucks, obviously, because this is a festival. Um, but as of right now, we've decided not to, to do that. Instead, partner with the local eateries that we have, and they're going to feature one item from their menu, and we're kind of going to do like a cookbook gathering thing, where if you make a purchase at one of the restaurants, they'll give you a little card, and then we'll give them a ribbon to tie it all together, and each of the items will have the story behind it. So even storytelling through food. Um, and all of that, and I think that's everything that I've already talked about so far. And there's still things that I still have, I have one more meeting this week with people talking about how they want to be involved. Um, but the last stage of that is just things that we're still working on. So we'd love for the festival to be able to support the storytellers that we have now. So we have a couple monetary awards that we'd love to give out, um, for different things. We obviously are going to need, um, all the logistics and, you know, trash receptacles, picking tables for around the square, um, and outdoor stage, if I can find one of those somewhere. Um, and then, yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm working with them. Um, and then budgets for promotional items like signs and stuff like that. So that's kind of the phase that we're moving into, but, um, I, oh, and kind of the reason I came here tonight was I watched the meeting where they were talking about Dora in the phase that that was in, and that was something that the mine brought up that would be really nice, since they were going to do that live music on the square to have.
You don't have a lot of contestants on this liars contest.
Maybe, I actually am pretty unfamiliar with a liars contest.
Have a seat.
Um, I, I suggested a Story Slam. We were like, oh, we used to liars contests before. Like, it's the same thing, so maybe it is.
We used to have a liars' pitch, mostly in town.
There you go.
What, what date in October is this?
October fifth and sixth. Most of the festival stuff will be like this.
Lot of good work. Thank you so much.
There's a Facebook page too. It's this exact same names. If you want to follow it and see, we just announced Reverend May today and some other things.
Thank you.
Any committees meet since the last council meeting?
Another business makes comment?
Oh, sure. What? You're not off.
Do you have to put it on the agenda? I don't know.
Still citizens comment.
Go ahead. All right.
Hello, I'm Bernie Roll. Uh, I have a couple of businesses in town, but in particular, I want to talk about Adventure Pro Outdoors. Uh, I've got just two quick items. One, I wanted to kind of put it on record with, uh, council that, uh, back in February, February twenty, twenty twenty-four, I scheduled a meeting with District and Jimmy to talk about water and sewer bills for Adventure Pro Outdoors. Cause we had some really, really high water and sewer bills. And, uh, when I arrived, you know, he wanted to meet me here in the council chambers, and Jason was present as a, as a witness, because he wanted that to, to be there. But after I reviewed all the information that I had with him, he said he would take a look at it, take care of it, or make a recommendation. I haven't heard from him yet, so. Yeah, I guess. I just want to make sure that, you know, I don't want this to kind of fall through the cracks. So we can make sure that he's aware of it. I did send a follow-up email early during the month, just to see where things stand. But I did provide a package as well.
What was the date again?
Uh, well, we met February twentieth, and then I sent out a follow-up email, April third, twenty twenty-four, just to see if he could tell me. It was really more about the sewer pavement. I wasn't going to argue, you know, the water usage. So, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, Adventure Pro Outdoors in combination with Hocking College on June seventh and eighth is, uh, partnering to put on a music festival, um, that'll, uh, support, uh, my son's Traumatic Brain Injury Foundation that goes, uh, helping people with mental health issues, traumatic brain injuries, and money that we want to give to, uh, prevent suicide. And so that's going to, that concert event's going to take place at Hocking College on June seventh and eighth. So appreciate, uh, any support, uh, that you want to give. Uh, and really, the support would be just attending the, the concert, and we hope, we're hoping that it's going to bring, you know, fifteen hundred people in for the weekend camping and enjoying, uh, what Nelsonville has to offer. Okay?
Nice.
That's it?
Okay, um, so again, has any committees met since the last council? Uh, planning development, we talked about Dora. The application needs to be put together by District and Jimmy, the department head, which they're working on, uh, to bring to council, so we can, uh, receive the program. And also in that committee meeting, um, we discussed that the planning commission now has five full members.
Yes.
And the current chairman asked if it was possible that we could, um, have an alternate on that committee, so that someone has to look at. Any other committees?
Yeah, my, my.
I just had a real quick question about Dora. Can the people charge different prices for their drinks instead of just a dollar?
Well, it depends on how the work gets turned out, but technically what's done is it's, the city will charge, you know, that business, whatever it is, fifty cents for a dollar for the cup or whatever it is. It's really, it's up to the.
And then, then that's just to be able to purchase what?
Correct.
Thank you. That was, I was unclear.
Yeah.
It's, it's just a cup you buy.
Oh, I know that.
And then you go in and buy beer.
So what you put in it, you pay for appropriately.
Right. If you, if you walk into mine and it's whatever it is, or if you go to Stewart's and it's whatever it is.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not controlling prices. We're just selling guys.
I thought that, but I didn't want to be confused.
Yeah, it's just whatever they sell. We can't, what is it? Tobacco, firearms, alcohol tobacco bombs. They, that's got nothing to do with the city. The prices are set by the establishment. So all you're paying for is, you pay for the cup, and you can take it to any establishment and buy a beer.
So you have to have a cup in order to buy the beer for Dora?
To be able to go out and drink it.
Right.
So where, where I've been, they have the cups. They write, it's printed, and there's a space for a date, and you use a black Sharpie and write a date, full date on it, so that way it can't be changed. And when you walk, if you buy one into the, the mine, and you go to the rhapsody, you got to show them that cup to be able to take it out. Then you have to dump it in the cup, and you're only allowed to have a cup outside.
So will that be, will that be looked at as far as police presence?
Yeah, that's part.
I, I know that's a stupid question, but I just wanted to get it out.
Yeah, sanitation and security and all those things are all part of that.
That's great. Yeah. You better quit drinking. Uh, the police and fire, the police and fire.
You can still walk outside with Pepsi.
The police and fire met, uh, Friday. And, uh, I, I was, I discussed, I'll make it real quick, because we're, we're in a long meeting here, but not, we discussed, or I brought up with Ms. Sonic and Mr. Larson, Lawson over there. Uh, I brought up doing, uh, looking into self dispatching our police officers. And I was abruptly told a bunch of things why we couldn't do it. So, but I, I just want to reiterate to the public that I'm constantly looking at ways to make things better for these guys over here. And that's honest to God's truth. I'm not looking to do anything else but to make things better for you and to make things better for the people, citizens and officers. So what I'm, what I've done is I've contacted, and I'll tell the public, I've contacted the mayor of Logan, Greg Fronfelder, I've contacted Steve Patterson, the mayor of Athens. And I'm going to go to Logan, because they're dispatching their own officers. I'm going to get a, see how they're set up. I'm going to get an analysis of cost. And then, um, I contacted the chief, uh, McGruder down in Athens today. And I'm going down there, take a look at their setup, get a cost analysis. Now, I know we're going to, we're going to do a contract with nine-one-one. I was asking that we do a one-year contract to let me further investigate this, this, this whole situation. But, um, as I see on our ordinances, that, that didn't, uh, that didn't materialize. But, uh, I know you guys have heard this all before, but I just wanted the public to know that I'm constantly thinking about this and wanting to make it a better, safer, and I, to me, what better than to have your own people looking at you, dispatching you to get some attention? So, and that's my thought. Now, I'm no professional advocate, but that's all I've got there.
Any, any other committees?
District area brought up about restarting mayor's support in, uh, June.
Okay.
Is what I'm doing.
All right.
That's enough right now. You understand? Not another word. You were saying we need to end?
Right. I, the reason I asked about an alternate, or Zoney is, and Greg sat on Zoney's, or I Zoney, I'm sorry. Is because if you have someone that has something happen and they aren't able to attend a meeting, we had a wonderful member who traveled with FEMA, and he was an asset, but, and he served for more than ten years, and that's for a poem. But when it came recently, in the past three years, we, he was not able to participate as he had been because there were so many different crises that took place. So it made it difficult to try to conduct business, correct, Greg?
Correct.
So that's why I asked about an alternate, if that would be somebody that would sit in, they would have a general idea of what we're doing. And if this other individual couldn't be there, that person, if that's legal to do that, could participate, and we could go ahead and complete the project and not have to wait. So I guess that's the reason that, and we also had extra people apply this time, so it seemed like a nice thing for us to be complimented that way and to try to see if we could work out something, so. That's the logic behind it.
Great, thank you. Um, utility committee, Matt, however, Ms. Sonic and Mr. Dumby aren't here. Mr. Flowers, you're on that committee. Could you touch on your discussion?
Who was it there?
At the last committee meeting?
Oh, wait.
Hey.
Maybe I took a preview that day.
There was a lot of confusion. Everybody was up for paper.
Yeah, there, 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 there was a lot of, a lot of people sitting at the tables. I didn't know what committee I was on. I was told to come back for a finance committee, and I wasn't even on that committee. I'm sorry about that.
Well, as I recall, there was, um, Ms. Cummings made a presentation concerning the COG.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and I think we touched on the, uh, the service director had some updates for us. We don't need to go back through all that, but that was the main part of the utility.
And that COG, um, I've been contacted by her because Ms. Sonic is not going to be able to attend the May first, uh, meeting at the library, Nelsonville Library. So they'd asked me to attend that, uh, May first meeting at the Nelsonville Library, Berry. Nelsonville Library, uh, COG meeting, they're having that, and that's council of February. So I will be attending that.
Okay. All right, and I think the last one was the finance committee, Matt. Mr. Dumby, Ms. Sonic aren't here. Mr. Lawson is on that committee. Um, but. We have quite a few pieces of legislation that was discussed, and we'll be coming forward for that.
My, my, it's on the agenda for the night.
Yes, sir. Okay, I think that was all the committees, correct?
Uh, Mr. Glenn, can we go back real quick to, um, Ms. Parsley's comment about, um, the alternate?
Yes.
Can we, can we ask Mr. Rowe if he can provide us, uh, legal advice there on if we can have an alternate for that, um, plan?
Yeah, because I think in the charter it says five members, so we'll have to look at the options. So, well, it was, it's not just the charter, it's going to be the, the, um, the ordinance that would have established, um, putting into effect the charter provisions, and so we'd have, I'd have to look at all.
The charter certainly wouldn't have the answer, but the ordinance might.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe we'll have to do that.
Okay. Um, department updates. Do we have any?
The only thing I wanted to say was asshole, I, I heard it come up on viewpoint this morning when I was heading down the um, people talking about the asshole. The tentative date to start is June tenth on all this project. And then the city's got nine rooms that we're paving off of that project. So, but the tentative start date is, uh, June tenth.
Okay, great. Okay, with that, we'll move on to ordinances for a second reading. Um, ordinance twenty-six, twenty-four, an ordinance repealing and abolishing ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-two, and enacting new APV regulations.
An ordinance repealing and abolishing ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-two, and enacting new APV regulations which authorize the use of APVs in the streets and to make Nelsonville APV friendly. Whereas, the city's ATV regulations need to be changed to allow for the convenience and enjoyment for the citizens of the city and for the potential economic opportunity to the city from tours, visiting the city and region. Whereas, the city desires to make Nelsonville an ATV-friendly community. Whereas, council determines the best manner in which to achieve these goals is to change the city's ATV regulations to allow the use of ATVs on all city streets year-round from sunrise to sundown, seven days a week, unless a special event is organized with city approval. Whereas, ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-two, approved, secreted towards the city's ATV regulations, but the provisions of ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-two expired on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Ordinance twenty-eight, twenty-two, codified at section seven, five point five zero of the Nelsonville Code of Ordinances, is hereby repealed and abolished. The City of Nelsonville hereby enact the ATV regulations set forth in each of the day, which is attached here to and incorporated herein by reference. The City of Nelsonville hereby authorizes the use of ATVs on all city streets year-round from sunrise to sundown, seven days a week, unless a special event is organized with city approval, then hours may be extended. All ATVs and any operator and overriding shall follow all laws and regulations set forth by the State of Ohio, ORC four-five-one-nine-point-two-zero, equipment rule, as amended, and the City of Nelsonville, section seven-five-point-five-zero ATV regulations, as amended, and are subject to such penalties and fines established by law. The formal ordinance was adopted in all action and all its deliberations of the City Council. The City of Nelsonville, Ohio, were conducting an open meeting to the public in compliance with all applicable legal requirements, including section one-twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time committed by law, duly enacted by council on, um, on second reading the eighth day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, motion to, uh, suspend the rules on second reading?
So, second, man.
Any citizens' comments on suspension? Any council discussion?
For the ordinance?
On suspension of the rules, correct? Okay? Call the role on suspension?
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Sure.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adopt?
So, second.
Any citizens' comments on adoption?
I got a comment. Does this permanently stay in effect? Is there no expiration date on this?
Correct. Okay, any council discussion on adoption?
Could, could I?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you brought up a great point a few months ago. I'm all for ATVs. Let me just get that out right now. I am. I, I think they're, they're a plus for the city. But I think sunup to sundown is probably, um, going to be a little bit trying for the citizens. As, uh, you, you had brought up during the trail season, that let them come into the city, spend their money. Uh, I think this is giving everybody, and I couldn't be wrong, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this is giving everybody in town to ride around on their ATVs from sunup to sundown. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. It's no different than it has been.
On Chestnut Street, it includes lawnmowers. One at the noun Chestnut with a little pinup.
So, so, so that is going to be my objection to this. I don't want anybody to think I'm against ATVs. I'm not. I'm against the sunup to sundown, three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
So what would be your proposal?
The same thing you brought up one time during the council meeting, right? But the, the season would be my proposal. The season that they run the trails, and I don't know when it is, I don't know how long it is, I don't know anything about it. But I'm just, I'm objecting to three hundred and sixty-five days a year, sunup to sundown. And then you're gonna kick in a special thing so they can run around at night if it permits their issue. I just don't think that's, I don't think that's good for the city myself, and that's just my own personal, uh, observation. I have nothing against ATVs at all. If they're licensed, if they got lights at night, if they're running the trails, I would, I would be all for that. That's all I got.
I believe in our park and rep committee meeting, we discussed, um, having, uh, guys that do snow removal and using their ATVs for that.
We do.
Okay.
We do have individuals that utilize, people that live within the community and have businesses within the community, that use their ATVs for snow plowing, you know, sidewalk removal. So it works quick, um, and they drive them into town. So, I just think that, that's why I propose doing it all year round. In terms of any lawnmowers, I don't know, I mean, that's not part of this ordinance. That would be not, again, that would be against, you know, this policy. It's not an ATV, but, um, as far as utilizing their UTVs or whatever all year round, it's not a problem. And that also includes, it would include like golf carts, I recommend that too, but I don't think a lot of people run them with a golf cart.
Golf cart would be a slow moving vehicle.
Slow moving vehicle.
The season dates go to December. You got?
The season's what?
April to December, so most people are riding January, February, March anyways.
So that's the whole season?
Yeah, April to December. April fifth to like December fifteenth. So.
So your concern was for, uh, the folks that have to move the snow?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So if your concern was the folks that are moving the snow about, then all you would need to do is extend it a little further to cover the winter season. It does not need to be year-round.
Any other council discussion? Uh, clerk called the role on adoption?
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
No.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Oh.
Yes.
How, how did you vote, sir?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Um, ordinance twenty-six, twenty-four passes. Okay, second reading on ordinance thirty, twenty-four, an ordinance setting waterpark fees for the Nelsonville Waterpark for the twenty-four season.
Whereas, the waterpark fees need to be set for the twenty-twenty-four season. Whereas, council desires to update the pool pricing schedule to respect the new pricing schedule for the twenty-twenty-four pool season. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The waterpark fee schedule for the twenty-twenty-four season for the Nelsonville Waterpark shall be as follows. Daily entry fee for in-town. For, enough, five dollars, children three and under are free. Daily entry fee for out-of-town, ages four and up, five dollars, children three and under free. Seasonal pathways. Household for minimum, I'm, I'm sorry, maximum of six people is one ninety-nine in-town, three twenty-five out-of-town. Adults, one twenty-five in-town, one hundred fifty out-of-town. Youth ages four to seventeen, one hundred dollar in-town, one twenty-five out-of-town. Seniors over sixty-five, in-town is free, twenty-five dollars out-of-town. Employees of the City of Nelsonville and immediate family in-town are free and out-of-town are free. Active-duty service veterans versus fathers with proper IDs, in-town free and out-of-town free. Nelsonville York students get in-town rates with a student ID. Additional fees, the pool rental fees, the pool rental rate is two hundred fifty dollars for two hours after hour. Pool rental, rental rate is a hundred fifty dollars during pool hours up to fifty-gifts. Swimming lessons and water aerobics, forty-five dollars per child swimming lesson, five dollars per aerobic session, four dollars adult lap swim, and silk, silk sneakers are free for aerobics. For in-town rates, must have a Nelsonville address or a school ID as shown on a water bill or hack return. The city will offer a free swim on July fourth, two thousand twenty-four. Sponsors of swim days will get twenty-five percent off the daily passes, minimum of a hundred passes and limited to pool capacity. Concession pricing is at the discretion of the city manager. At the city manager's sole discretion, the authority to set or adjust concession pricing may be delegated to the pool manager. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest date provided by law, duly enacted by council on second reading the twenty-second day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, uh, motion to suspend the rules on second reading?
So, second, man.
Any citizens' comments on suspension? Any council discussion on suspension?
Would, why wouldn't you suspend the rules on it?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, no, it's still, there's no suspension.
Okay. That chart on this one, there's not. So we go to, um, motion to adopt?
City discussions?
So moved. I'll second.
Any, uh, citizens' comments on adoption?
I just have a question, Greg. Did the, the leak that developed last year, I think it was last year, did it get fixed?
There's been, there's been multiple leaks fixed in the pool. Um, we had a company come in last year and they fixed one crack, and they said they think we have a problem behind the lights. So the electrician's coming in at the end of this week, and we're, we got the packing coming that they use behind the lights because the lights in the pool don't work, so he's gonna fix those and we're gonna repack them.
Did that come out of the Betty Johnson fund?
What?
School repairs. I remember something was mentioned about that.
I, I can't remember off the top of my head what, what it came out of.
This year.
Last year, it was fifty thousand.
Last year, I believe it was the capital improvement fund, and that's where it's set to come out this year as well.
Did some of, maybe the year before come out of Betty Johnson fund?
I remember discussing. I don't remember council ever authorizing it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe we used any of the Betty Johnson money.
On the pool?
Correct.
Okay. Any other citizens' comments? Council discussion, and at this point, there will be no citizens' comments or questions during council discussion. Okay, motion to adopt?
So moved. Yeah, we already.
Oh, yeah, we already did that.
Okay, all right. Clerk called the role.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes. Ordinance thirty, twenty-four passes. Okay, ordinance thirty-two, twenty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a new nine-one-one contract with the Athens County Commissioners and Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center. Uh, would someone like to introduce it?
Introduce it.
An ordinance in ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a new nine-one-one contract with the Athens County Commissioners and the Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center for eighty-five thousand dollars annually for a term of two years. Whereas, the city's police department needs dispatching services in order for the police department to fully carry out its law enforcement duty. Whereas, the Athens County Administrator has negotiated a contract, I'm sorry, whereas the city commissioner has negotiated a contract with the Athens County Commissioners and the Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center for the provision of nine-one-one dispatching services for the city's police department. Whereas, the Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center already provides, provides dispatching services for the city's fire department and ENF. Whereas, the Athens County Commissioners and the Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center are willing to contract with the city to provide dispatching services to the city's police department for a term of three years at an annual cost to the city of eighty-five thousand dollars. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager is hereby and shall be authorized to enter into a nine-one-one dispatching services contract with the Athens County Commissioners and the Athens County nine-one-one Emergency Communications Center for up to eighty-five thousand dollars annually for a term of two years, beginning February eighth, two thousand twenty-four, which contract is attached here to as exhibit A and incorporated by reference. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect at the earliest time committed by law, duly enacted by council on the third day of May, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, so the amount is incorrect, the eighty-five thousand. It's actually eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight. So I make a motion to correct that.
How about the three and then the two here?
More discuss, first, we have a motion to correct the amount.
Um, I think we need to correct the date on that, too.
For a second reading?
Well, it says February eighth. Make it first contact. We could begin February eighth, I'm sorry. What's the actual date supposed to be?
I don't believe the ordinance is going to affect before June sixth. June, June first.
We would have to sit for thirty days after the second reading.
Right. So I guess June fifth, technically, right?
Okay, so the instead of February, it's just June?
Yeah. I think that was the original date that had been proposed, but I, I think it does need to be changed.
So, it's gonna start on September one, or a day through June thirty.
That's, that's what counseling was. It can't be earlier than June fifth.
Okay, okay. I don't know.
Well, I mean, the counterargument would be you don't want to be paying double, you know, two different service providers. Um, but it is up to council. It can't be, it can't be, this ordinance will not go into effect before June fifth, but you can have it go into effect, or the payment, that is, be made after June fifth.
Well, if I may, um, how can college? Oh, they're not done until June the third, right? That's right. I was thinking May. Go ahead.
So, July first date would work, um, and then you would just have the, I guess, the two-year period.
I, I think it should be first, the, the earliest possible by law, which would be the June fifth or six, or maybe that day.
Okay, we have a.
That would be my recommendation.
We have a motion first to correct the amount.
Okay.
Great.
So, um.
I'll second the motion, I think.
Okay. Any council, council discussion on correcting the amount?
The amount?
The amount.
Eighty-nine thousand. Yeah, it's supposed to be eighty-six, nine.
Eighty, eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight.
But it's supposed, isn't it supposed to be eighty-six thousand, nine?
Eighty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight, is the correct amount.
That's the amount that I got from the contract I was reviewing today.
Oh, yeah, that's right. I got the, yeah.
Okay.
Can I just add, you need to say up to, because it just says four. And neither, she said up to, so make those two words batch.
Okay, um, clerk called the role on the amount. Motion.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Okay, we're, we're calling the role on approving the amount?
Changing the amount.
I'm gonna abstain, my vote.
So that, that motion does pass, four to one. Now let's work out the, uh, start date. Motion to amend the start date?
I'll, I'll motion.
Don't second it.
To what?
What? To the earliest date. To the earliest date provided by law. Did you say that's June 5th?
June 5th would be thirty, thirty days after May 6th, which would be, I, I would anticipate that, well, that would be the next meeting, earliest, that's the second reading could be. And May has 31 days.
It should be June 6th.
June 6th, yeah.
All right. Is there a reason why you can't wait till July 1st so the universe, so the city's not paying twice for two different service providers in the same month?
I'm saying so we have dispatching, it's not asleep while we call.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, we have a motion on the floor, do we get a second to that? The thing is, okay.
Clerk call the roll to, um, change the start date to June 5th.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clannan?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Abstaining.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay. And that was first reading, so the second reading will be on May 6th.
Mr. President, one more thing, the mismatch between the, the body of the ordinance and the second section, one for three years, two years? Which is, that is wrong. The last very ass clause.
Okay, since that has a typo, that's correct. So that could be corrected.
What's the number then?
Two years, yeah.
It's two years, right?
Two years.
So it says two years.
Well, up at the top it says three.
So, is the city gonna end up paying more? Or not?
Uh, ordinance 3324, an ordinance amending the 2024 appropriations ordinance. Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Whereas the 2024 appropriations need to be amended. Whereas appropriations of $3,000 into the general fund, number 100, line item 100-100-33017 for body cameras. Whereas appropriations of $75,000 into various funds, line item, as necessary for employee costs. Whereas appropriations of $25,000 into the general fund number 100, line item 100-64, 65, I believe. 41112, if necessary. Whereas appropriations of $15,000 into various funds is necessary for contract services. Whereas appropriations of $95,000 into sewer fund number 750, line item 750-760-33014, utilities, if necessary. Whereas appropriations $3,000 into park and recreation fund number 300, line item 300-250-80010, leave and other expenses, if necessary. Whereas appropriations of $60,940 into the general fund number 100, line item 100-200-40010, operating, operating expenses and accepting the Mark's grant as an unanticipated revenue, if necessary. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The 2024 appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following funds. Appropriations in the sum of $3,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, number 100, to line item number 100-100-33017 for body cameras. Appropriations for the sum of $25,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, number 100, to line item number 100-340-10065 for other employee costs. Appropriations in the sum of $25,000 from the unappropriated balance of the water fund, number 700, to line item number 700-340-10065 for other employee costs. Appropriations in the sum of $25,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sewer fund, number 750, to line item number 750-340-10065 for other employee costs. Appropriations of $25,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, number 100, to line item number 100-625-41112. Appropriations for $5,000 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, number 100, to line item number 100-370-21100 for contract services. Appropriations of $5,000 in the unappropriated balance of the water fund, number 700, to line item number 700-370-21100 for contract services. Appropriations of $5,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sewer fund, number 750, to line item number 750-370-21100 for contract services. Appropriations of $95,000 from the unappropriated balance of the sewer fund, number 750, to line item number 750-760-33014 for utilities. Appropriations of $3,000 from the unappropriated balance of the park and recreation fund, number 300, to line item number 300-250-80010 for leave and other expenses. Appropriations of $16,940 from the unappropriated balance of the general fund, number 100, to line item 100-200-40010 for operating expenses and accepting the Mark's grant as unanticipated revenue. The total appropriated balance is decreased by said amount. The total appropriations of each respective fund, mentioned above, are increased by said amount. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. This ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on second reading on 13th day of May, 2024.
Okay, that was first reading, any other council discussion?
What is all this?
Well, basically, this amounts to situation council found itself in, and we're playing catch-up now with a lot of appropriations.
Well, I, I have a discussion on this. I would like to know who to ask, where I can find these, what they're being appropriated to.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak on it.
Sure, absolutely.
Oh, I mean, can you give them to me so I can study them and see what we're appropriating, $75,000?
I didn't think any of that made sense either.
Yeah, so, uh, this is a standard appropriations ordinance. It's, uh, in the same, uh, and explanation as everyone before, at least in my nine years here. The place to get directly to your question that you could find these line items is in the expense report. I actually send it once a day, you can also find it on the website. Uh, that's what I'll do.
Do whatever it is?
That's my auditor's report, I'm sorry. But it's actually the city's budget with a running total, it gives you updates on where we're at in each month. And I send that out to the council, as well as provide it on the website for the public um, on a monthly basis. So, more specifically, to some of these line items, um, these were the items brought up in the finance committee, it is true. Um, this is the first finance meeting in four months, and there was a free, two and a half, three-month delay before that one. Um, so, in many ways, this would have been spread out, had there been more opportunity to present to the council.
But here's what I'm asking, uh, Taylor. Um, uh, 100-100-33017, what's that?
So that's one of the line items, so in our budget.
In, in your budget?
Yes.
Okay.
In our budget, there's, uh, well, it, it used to be like 3,000 line items of the city. We actually consolidated many down, I believe we're at 750. So still a lot. Uh, but easier to read at 750 than 2 or 3,000.
Well, just for instance, other, other employees' costs.
Right.
I mean, how am I supposed to?
No, I get you, I get you, so, um, real quick, before I finish, uh, if I answer that, let me say those line items are set aside by Department 5 Fund. So in other words, like, the police department's funded only out of the general funds. So he has, um, one, five line items, and the police department, and the general fund, three or four, and the capital improvement, like the body. Exactly. And so this is a way of just organizing our expenses, but it's primarily a way for council to control expenses through the line items. Um, more specifically, I can go through these really quick. The body cameras is due to city data with the cameras. So the city doesn't get rid of their body camera storage. Most cities and villages have like a process, they could get rid of them every so many years once they take, once they get a certain, kind of like milk you throw out, the heads of state. We don't do that out of interest of keeping them for posterity. The company said it would cost more for unlimited data because we have 10 times the allowable amount. It's not really a thing we did wrong, it's just that we're using a lot of space with those. So that's why there's 3,000 there. The other employee costs, uh, just to speak frankly, is due, that is the line item that city council set aside, um, for settlements. So, there was a previous settlement.
Settlement?
Earlier in this year.
Settlements for what?
Uh, lines the council, please, whatever the council would like to settle for, um, legally. So, um, there was settlements at the city of Nelsonville approved by the council, uh, and they were paid and they need appropriated for.
What settlements were they?
Uh, they were, I honestly would love to avoid the specifics, but they're, they're well-covered. They're well-covered in the press, um, as well as in council minutes.
You mean paying out people, for example, former council presidents?
Sure, yeah.
So why do you have three different, uh, and in fact, even E is $25,000? You have $75,000, uh, just for other employee costs? What other employee costs are we talking about for $75,000?
That's what I just described.
This is, I think you described that already. This is the line of discussion.
Well, you could say, look for this on the internet, you said.
It's under documents.
Under, city of Nelsonville?
Yeah.
Auditor's office documents?
CityofNelsonville.com, there's a link that says documents.
Okay. And you could say, a city council president that was wrongly accused of a settlement.
Okay, this is the first reading of the ordinance. There will be a second reading on May 13th. We can pick up discussion at that time. Moving on to ordinance 3424. Authorizing the city manager with consent of an applicable employee to allow the city to purchase vacation time of up to four weeks for the applicable employee in total for the year 2024. If someone would like to introduce it?
I will.
Whereas Article 17, Section 2 of the city's labor contract provides for the city to purchase employee vacation time. Whereas, in some cases, for an applicable employee, with the applicable employee's consent, the city may wish to purchase vacation time of up to four weeks for the applicable employee for the year 2024. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. With written approval of the city manager and an applicable employee of the city, Article 17, Section 2 of the city's labor contract, the city may purchase vacation time for the applicable employee for up to four weeks for the applicable employee. The notice, the notice requirements hereby waived if the city manager and applicable employee both give written approval of the vacation time purchase. This ordinance shall take effect at the earliest time permitted by law, duly enacted by council on second reading, 13th day of May, 2024.
Any council discussion? Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I wanted to make sure to cover this, and if I could, uh, briefly say, without interruption, the city council contracts for longer than I've been alive have approved three weeks of vacation payout here at the city of Nelsonville. There are requests for four. Generally speaking, it is much cheaper for the city to pay them out than to let them accrue forever because pension costs get more expensive and wages get more expensive. So for example, if we pay $20 an hour today instead of $25 an hour in four years, it is obviously a savings. Uh, this is a request, obviously, that's up to the council, uh, and their will, but I want to make sure to explain there are requests. The auditors, the law director, have suggested this pathway. And, um.
So use it or lose it, it's not an option?
Um, generally speaking, in public sectors, not really. They, 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 it's very life balance.
So my question is, why does the gentleman buy two weeks of? Two weeks of vacation time?
So, uh.
He didn't have, he wasn't having the entire time.
Go ahead. So currently, is this in the current contract that we just settled with? Some of our employees currently? Three weeks is. Currently. But not four.
So this, this would override that?
For just 2024.
Okay.
For just two?
One year.
Not one full year, just calendar year 2024.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay, Mr. Auditor?
Yeah. I would phrase it for the balance of 2024, since we're in April, not April.
Second reading will be coming up. Ordinance 3524, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan. Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. An ordinance, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to apply for, accept, and enter into an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account agreement on behalf of the city of Nelsonville for design of the water system improvement Phase 3 project and designating a dedicated repayment source for loan financing and declaring an emergency. Whereas by ordinance 19-22, the council authorized the city manager to apply for an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account for which the city subsequently applied. Whereas the city of Nelsonville seeks to design the water system improvement Phase 3 project. Whereas the city of Nelsonville desires to use WSRLA loan financing for the project. Whereas the Ohio EPA requires the government authorities to pass legislation to apply for loan financing and the execution of an agreement as well as designing a dedicated repayment source for loan financing. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. It is necessary to complete the design for the water system improvement Phase 3 project for the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of the city of Nelsonville. It is necessary to apply for design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account. The city manager of the city of Nelsonville is hereby authorized to request from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account the financing required to complete the design of the project. The method of repayment of design financing from the Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account shall be water revenues generated from Nelsonville water customers. City council hereby finds that this ordinance was adopted in a meeting open to the public as required by applicable law. By members of council voting to dispense with the two millions of this ordinance, the rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. And this ordinance is hereby enacted on first reading through ORC 731.15 and Nelsonville City Charter, Sections 4.09 through 4.11. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, Article 4, Sections 4.09 through 4.11, as an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city needs to execute the WSRLA agreement, which was just provided to the city manager last week, but needs to be executed this week in order to proceed with the Phase 3 project. And it's necessary for the immediate preservation of the public's health, safety, morals, or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force in effect upon its adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading under the special rules, 22nd day of April, 2024.
Motion to suspend the rules? So good. Clerk call the roll.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clannan?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. Yes.
Any citizens' comments on suspension?
What is a revolving loan? Is that an endless supply?
This is on suspension, we'll have a This is on suspension. We'll have a comment in a moment.
You just said citizens' comments.
On suspension of the rules.
Excuse me?
You're, you're fine. Uh, council discussion on suspension. Okay, um, quick call the roll on suspension. Or I'm sorry, yeah, motion to adopt, motion to adopt. Uh, now you can vote, uh, citizens' comments on adoption.
What is a revolving loan? Hello? You just accepted it.
Could you give an explanation on that, Mr. Sappington?
Yeah, it's the same thing as before, earlier discussing the auditor's report. It's where funds are approved for a specific project from a state or federal agency. It revolves towards us, it comes to us.
Endless supply of money just keep revolving, you just keep borrowing?
It is not. It's for specified amount.
Any other comments?
What would this be used for?
This project specifically is for Phase Three of the water project, so water line replacements across the city.
So we're still taking out loans to pay for that?
Yeah. If Mr. Betts was here, I understand that Phase Three does have a loan forgiveness portion, which essentially is just a grant. It means as soon as it's spent, it's granted. I don't know what the percentage is.
He, he brought it up in the previous meeting.
Yeah.
So forth.
Well, my understanding is that all the grant money has been used already. So whatever other loans we're getting are actually loans that we have to pay back. Yes, I hear it. Thank you.
Okay, any council discussion?
I'd just like to reiterate the point that Mr. Sappington just made. I don't think that he prefers, but none of, none of, none of this money, this is, this is for Phase Three, so any money from, uh, prior. This is only Phase Three. So there will be forgiveness on this as well, on this phase. This is, this is Phase Three.
Any other council discussion?
How many phases do we have in there?
I don't have that answer.
Is it Phase Three water right now or Phase Two water?
So we're just Phase Four?
And the way it goes is one year we do water from your sewer, the next water sewer. So it's just the phases we're on. Right now, everything we've just done is Phase Two. So Phase Three will be the next water.
And if they need more, they'll go to Phase Four?
Well, it's just to keep updating all the, all the old lines that have. So, so Phase Four sewer is next. And then there'll be Phase Three water and then Phase Five sewer.
Got you. Got you.
So how much do we currently owe? How much does the city owe that we're having to pay back?
Okay, we're under council discussion.
I, I mean, he was just answering questions. I'm just following up on her question over there.
As you well know. We are, we are past citizens' comments on this adoption. Uh, call the roll on adoption, please.
Yes.
Flower?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Jerry Lawson?
Yes. Yes.
Ordinance thirty-five twenty-four passes. Ordinance thirty-six twenty-four, uh, ordinance except.
You missed the same train, the same train.
Maybe there was. It's written wrong on the agenda here, but it's, it's actually a different ordinance. So if you look at actual ordinance, it's different.
Well, we don't have the ordinances. Oh, we have it on the agenda. So.
He's gonna read it what it is.
I do have a quick question before we get to reading it. At one point, will y'all let the citizens actually know how much money they owe? Because the citizen's the ones paying for all this. I mean, you cut me off because you don't want it said, but at one point, will you make it clear to everyone?
Mr. President, I, I disagree with what she's saying. I think that's a perfect thing that she could reach out to the auditor's office.
Okay, moving on, please. Uh, it's already a long enough meeting. An ordinance, an ordinance, ordinance accepting a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Ohio Department of Development for the Nelsonville Dog Park and thanking the dog park volunteers. Would someone like to introduce it?
An ordinance accepting a grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the Ohio Department of Development for the Nelsonville Dog Park and thanking Dog Park volunteers. The Ohio House and Senate and House Finance Chair Representative Jay Edwards and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Ohio Department of Development has awarded the city of Nelsonville a grant in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Nelsonville Dog Park. Whereas countless volunteers have dedicated time and energy to improving and maintaining the Nelsonville Dog Park and advocating for the Nelsonville Dog Park for which the city is grateful. Whereas the city wishes to thank the Ohio House and Senate for their support, in particular Representative Jay Edwards, who currently serves as Chair of the House Finance Committee and has advocated for the city of Nelsonville in the House. Now therefore be ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. That the city of Nelsonville accepts the generous two hundred and fifty thousand dollars donation from the Ohio Department of Development for the Nelsonville Dog Park. The city auditor shall accept the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars donation from the Ohio Department of Development and place it into the unappropriated balance. The Department of Council is directed to send a copy of this ordinance to the Ohio Department of Development and to Chair Edwards. The city of Nelsonville expresses their sincere gratitude to the Ohio Department of Development, volunteers of the Dog Park, the Ohio House, Senate and Representative Jay Edwards, quarter of the Nelsonville Dog Park. The city auditor is hereby authorized to submit changes to the city's certificate of resources pursuant to this ordinance to the Athens County Budget Commission. Five members of council voting to dispense with the two readings of this ordinance. The rules are hereby suspended for this ordinance. The misordnance is hereby enacted on the first reading through O R C seven thirty-one point fifteen and Nelsonville City Charter, section four point zero nine through four point one one. This ordinance is hereby passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven thirty-one point thirty, Article four, section four point zero nine through four point one one. As an emergency in the operation of the city government as the city is in need of legal representation and is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, morals or welfare of the city. And this ordinance shall be in full force effective upon its adoption. Ruling acted by council on first reading of suspension of the rules the twenty-second day of April, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules. Citizens' comments on suspension.
I have a comment. Can I talk?
Uh, this is on suspension of the rules. One moment. Okay, thank you. Any council discussion on?
It may apply though.
Any council discussion on suspension? Please call a roll on suspension.
Mr. Flower?
Yes. Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Uh, motion to adopt.
So there.
Citizens' comments on adoption.
I was at the Dog Park meeting and, uh, Mr. Kengemi was on the phone thing and Dan was on the phone thing also. And they were talking about it. And one of the comments Mr. Kengemi made was that the money that was being appropriated might be able to be used in a larger capacity than just the Dog Park. His words. I was at another discussion on Saturday night by one of the gentlemen that works for the State House and that is in charge of writing these. And he was talking about Jay Edwards, Jay Edwards writing this. And it, it, if it passes, it won't pass until July first. But the money, but if you think it's gonna go for the Dog Park right here, they can do more things with it than that was my understanding. So it's a little, I was surprised.
Hopefully Mr. Edwards will clear that up and say it's designated for Dog Park.
Because it was, Mr. Kengemi's the one that said, we have other uses that we can do that are related to that. Those were his words, not mine. That's all I can say. Nobody else was there for the Dog Park meeting except me and the people that were.
So, Mr. Sappington, could you address that maybe?
I, I, I wasn't at the Dog Park meeting, but if, if it makes everyone in the room, if it helps everyone in the room, the State Department of Development requires a submitted budget for four funds. Uh, will be this finally dispersed, so.
So there has to be a complete budget ready for that money.
Yeah, the city will have to make a budget. I, I'm, I'm not a part of that budget process for that grant, uh, because the auditor's office doesn't manage grants, but, um, I just, hopefully that's helpful information.
If that grant is for Dog Park, shouldn't they be used for Dog Park?
I can, I can clarify some of that too about grants in, uh, you want me to do now or can I discuss? So when it comes to grants, depending on when we've applied for grants in the past, you, whatever you specifically put in your proposal to whoever's giving out the grant is what, and if they award it to you, that is what it has to be utilized for. Now, there are other things that we, that were drawn out by that dog in the Dog Park area as far as even a new canoe, like takeout point next to the Dog Park utilizing that same property. So it's possible that could be in this project and it's the same piece of property that where the Dog Park is. And, and so if there were other thing, and I believe if I'm not mistaken, there will be a building that will remain down there. So if they utilize some of those funds to put in restrooms, say, then that would be part of that Dog Park down there.
Well, they gotta be fun.
It, it, but I can't tell you what it is, what is in that, that specific grant, but in, but in grants.
That were on the committee had no idea of the things that you said. I told, if you'd have been at that meeting and say, well, if they put in a canoe ramp or anything, they would have gone, well, that's not for the Dog Park.
The Dog Park, I, I'm confident the Dog Park Board has seen that map that was, that had that on there. Cause that's been since the beginning of the Dog Park.
It looks a lot different than what it started out looking at.
I can't speak to that, so, but I can, that's, that's clarification on how grants.
You wanna make a comment?
Any other citizens' comments?
I have a question.
He just interrupted, right? I can't.
Go ahead.
Okay. This two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I, I kind of agree with Joanne there. I think that you said you won't be doing this appropriated. Is that, did I hear you say that?
I said I don't manage the grants. I'm not a grant, we don't, the finance office doesn't manage the department's grants.
But who does the appropriation of the money?
It's council.
Council will. He will distribute the money once we appropriate it.
So once the, once, once the, the, the money comes to us, will it be a little more clarified than, than this other piece of paper where it says generalities on?
Possibly, but I would say probably not because it would be.
You see what I mean though? I think we need to know where this, where this money is going and not, not just, you know.
I agree. I think that's why Dog Park Boards are, you know, meetings are also public.
Well, they probably don't know where it's going. Did they give it to Dan?
I did not.
That's all I can.
Any other citizens' comments?
I have a question. Um, since I don't have the ordinance in front of me, I'm not, I'm not even sure if I heard everything, but is this testing on emergency? You're suspending rules?
Yes.
Why? It's a Dog Park. There's no emergency on that.
This is so we can provide this back to the State House. This is not, this is not, we're not appropriating any money.
But I mean, why can it just not go through the two readings? I'm sure the State House can wait two weeks to have a second reading. Why does it have to be done immediately is my question.
It all has to do with the timing of, of availability when we put in the info. If we wait thirty days between now and next week, they can say, okay, we're giving out money for the Dog Park. So, or we're giving out grants for this. So what we do, call an emergency meeting or a special meeting and go in and do it. Right here is when it comes available, we're authorized to put it in and apply for it. As soon as it comes available, not wait and apply for it later.
No, I mean, when I say wait the two weeks is because that is the process for council. Usually things are not sent.
Which is over thirty days.
Usually things are not, or should not be, uh, passed through emergency. If there's no real emergency to get it done, if there's no real reason for that, there's no reason for not to just do it the way it's supposed to be done.
Unless there's a headline and that the city's gonna lose all of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I would say that it would probably be warranted.
Is that written somewhere that it has to be in by this specific date? Cause I would like to see that.
And you can do a public record request for that information.
Well, nobody returns the records request.
Who requested the ordinance?
I'm sorry.
Who requested the ordinance?
Finance committee, I believe that was discussed, that finance, so it's discussed in finance.
We're talking about a grant, right?
Yeah.
Money that's given to the city?
Yes.
Move on. What, 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 take it. There's nothing, nothing to discuss. Just take it. But, but it makes no sense.
I agree.
All right, uh, Mr. President, I'll put a motion on the floor to adopt. I'll second that. Quick call the roll.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Ordinance thirty-six twenty-four passes. Resolution, uh, two-two-eight-eight. A resolution to amend the city code of Nelsonville, Ohio to up the, update the designation of the depository institution from Nelsonville Home and Savings to Farmer's Bank and Savings Company. Would someone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
A resolution to amend the city code of Nelsonville, Ohio to update the designation of the depository institution.
Excuse me. We'll talk to you later.
From Nelsonville Home and Savings to Farmer's Bank and Savings Company and to authorize acceptance of their application through the deposit of public funds. Whereas the former Nelsonville Home and Savings, which was listed in the city, Nelsonville City Code as a designated depository for public funds, has merged into and changed its name to Farmer's Bank and Savings Company. Whereas it is necessary to update the city code to reflect the current name of this institution to ensure the accuracy and legality of the city's financial operation. Whereas Farmer's Bank and Savings Company has submitted an application slash agreement for the deposit of public funds for the period commencing March first, two thousand twenty-four and ending February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-seven, which complies with the requirements set forth in Ohio Revised Code, Section one thirty-five. Now therefore, they resolve by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio as follows. The Nelsonville City Code shall be amended to update the designation of the depository institution from Ohio, from Nelsonville Home and Savings to Farmer's Bank and Savings Company, ensuring that all references in the code reflect this change. The city treasurer is hereby authorized to accept the application slash agreement for the deposit of public funds submitted by Farmer's Bank and Savings Company, which includes a commitment to abide by Ohio Revised Code, Section one thirty-five and the related regulations governing the deposit and security of public funds. City treasurer is directed to ensure that all terms and conditions of the application slash agreement are in full compliance with the federal state laws and city policies and to conduct regular oversight to guarantee the safety and legality of the city's investments and deposits. The city treasurer shall provide regular updates to the city council regarding the status of the public fund deposit under this agreement, including any changes in terms and conditions, interest rates and other relevant financial matters. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council and in all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in. and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 731.30, because the immediate passage of the resolution is necessary so that the requirement of the Ohio Uniform Depository Act can be met, and this resolution shall be in full force in effect upon adoption, duly enacted by council on first reading the 22nd day of April, 2024.
Okay, motion to adopt the resolution?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments on adoption? Any council discussion? Motion to adopt? All right, good. Oh, I'm sorry. Click call the roll.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Resolution 2289, a re, resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of re, revenues generated by a two mil renewal of a levy. Would someone like to introduce it?
A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by a two mil renewal levy for general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19G, to be placed on the ballot on November 2, 2024, for general election, as a renewal levy and declaring an emergency. Whereas the current street levy for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges is due to expire on December 31st, 2024. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in need of said funds to adequately construct, reconstruct, resurface, and repair streets, roads, and bridges located within the city of Nelsonville. Whereas Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.03B, requires the city of Nelsonville to request the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by the renewal of the city's two mil levy expiring 2024, as a prerequisite for placing the issue on the ballot. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. That the clerk of council shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify to the city of Nelsonville the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the renewal of a five-year, two-mil levy outside the 10 mil limitation for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, Ohio Revised Code 5705.19G, to be placed on the ballot for the November 5th, 2024, general election, and to run for a term of five years commencing January 1st, 2025, as a renewal levy if approved by the voter. The clerk of council is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. The resolution is adopted as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, because the immediate passage of the resolution is necessary because the county auditor must certify the funds to be collected prior to adoption of the resolution, placing the issue on the ballot, and the date replacing the issue on the ballot is August 7th, 2024. Duly enacted by council on first reading on 22nd day of April, 2024.
A motion to adopt the resolution?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments?
So is this going to stay a two mil levy?
It is a renewal.
At a se, two mil, no more?
Right.
How much does this bring in?
Mrs. Sappington, do you know?
This resolution will ask the county auditor to certify how much it brings in, and then everybody will have their answer.
When? Before the election?
Yes. That's the point of it.
Why the hell?
You have to submit, and they'll give you the figures for both a replacement and a renewal. And then it's up to council as to which direction they want to go. The street has a three mil and a two ma, mil still?
So it's more than just a two mil?
The street has two mi, two mills. I mean, a two mil and a three mil. But they can do, I think, at separate times, right, Taylor?
Okay, council discussion on the resolution? Click call the roll.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Uh, resolution 2289.
Well, I hate because I thought you were gonna, I thought you were gonna pick one. So I'll make this a 2390.
Okay, so, yeah, I think we have to do both. So we have to do both, because I, because I think the auditor, when they, they come up there.
Yeah.
So this should be 2290?
Yeah.
I'll choose.
So one's a two mil, and then 2291.
Yeah. A resolution pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 5705.03B requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by a two mil replacement levy for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges, the Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.19G, to be placed on the ballot of the November 5th, 2024, general election as a replacement levy and declaring an emergency. Whereas the current street levy for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges is due to expire December 31st, 2024. Whereas the city of Nelsonville is in need of said funds to adequately construct, reconstruct, research, and repair the streets, roads, and bridges located within the city of Nelsonville. Whereas Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705.138, requires the city of Nelsonville to request the Athens County Auditor to certify the amount of revenues generated by the replacement of the city's two mil levy expiring in 2024 as a prerequisite for replacing, for placing the issue on the ballot. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. That the clerk of council shall certify a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor, requesting the Athens County Auditor to certify to the city of Nelsonville the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by the replacement of a five-year, two-mil levy outside the 10 mil limitation for the general construction, reconstruction, resurfacing, and repair of streets, roads, and bridges to be placed on the ballot for the November 5th, 2024, general election, and to run for a term of five years commencing January 1st, 2025, as a replacement levy if approved by the voter. The clerk of council is directed to deliver a copy of this resolution to the Athens County Auditor. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken to, taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution is adopted as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30, because the immediate passage of the resolution is necessary, because the Athens County Auditor must certify the funds to be collected prior to adoption of the resolution placing the issue on the ballot, and the date replacing the issue on the ballot is August 7th, 2024. Duly enacted by council on first reading on 22nd day of April, 2024.
Any motion to adopt resolution 2290?
Salute.
Any, uh, citizens' comments?
Yes, this is, um, be on the ballot as two separate tax levies? Or is it gonna be one tax levy for five mil?
It'll be, no. It, so it'll be one or the other. So we submit, if you notice, all the verbiage was identical except for renewal or replacement. So we submit that to the auditor. The auditor does two different calculations, and then brings back those numbers to council, and then council adopts as an ordinance either the renewal or the replacement, and that will, that's what will be on the ballot.
So what's your estimate of the renewal?
I don't know how she, I don't know how the auditor calculates that, so I can't, I can't answer that. But do you know how much we brought in the last year for, for tax levies for this, Sappington?
Um, I believe it was 147, but, um, I can get copies of it, so. I don't really like off the, sorry.
Right, no, 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 no.
Off the cuff.
I figured you'd know better than I would on that.
Is that strictly used for streets?
Yes. It's placed in the street levy.
Any council discussion?
Did we guys talk about that?
No. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, click call the roll.
Mr. Command?
Yes.
Mr. Flower?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Okay, so this would be 2291?
Yeah.
It, what is it, 22?
Resolution 2291, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an extension agreement for covered employees in the police department while negotiations for a new union contract are ongoing. With someone like that, there isn't so long.
Whereas negotiations for a new collective bargaining agreement for covered employees of the city's police department are ongoing. Whereas a union representative for covered employees of the city's police department has proposed an extension agreement to extend the current collective bargaining agreement for covered members of the Nelsonville City's Police Department while negotiate, negotiations remain ongoing. Now therefore, be resolved by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The city manager is hereby authorized to enter into an extension agreement to extend the current collective bargaining agreement for covered employees of the city's police department while negotiations for a new collective bargaining agreement remain ongoing. The extension agreement is attached here through those exhibit A. Council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions taken relative to the adoption of this resolution were taken in an open meeting in the Nelsonville City Council, and that all deliberations of council and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements. This resolution shall be in full force in effect as the earlier plan permitted by law, duly adopted by council on first reading the 22nd day of April, 2024.
Okay, um, motion to adopt resolution 2291?
Salute.
Second. Any citizens' comments? Any council discussion?
Um, just out of curiosity, where, um, where does this come, what committee would that be, uh, involved in? To approve this? Does that make sense?
Uh, police and fire and/or finance.
I was thinking finance, but I was just checking to see if that would have been in the police and fire. Also, because I never heard anything about it, but that, that mattered.
My guess is both committees would have jurisdiction over it.
So which, whichever one took, took the fortitude to bring it in front of their people, or like?
Yeah, I guess so.
Okay, all right. No, it was curiosity, but I'm not-
You're fine. Click call the roll.
Mr. Flowers?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
Come in.
Yes.
Resolution 2291 passes. Okay, city managers report. Mr. Canjemy, are you still on board?
I still am. Good evening, everyone. Uh, the first part of the report will be the code enforcement reporting since the last time it's been reported. Forty-three permits have been issued to include contractor demolition, rental, floodplain, and event permits, and, uh, the revenue produced was $12,705. The code enforcement officer also met with the Athens Metropolitan Housing, uh, different code and regulations, also with the land bank, uh, habitat for humanity plans, um, having another build in town here soon, and also in the investigation of the house fire that was up on Ford Street. As far as our staff is concerned, home and employer risk reduction program is still ongoing for the utilities department and, uh, Nelsonville Police Fire Utilities Service crews, and team building exercises are still in continuous. The, uh, following projects are the water plant and wastewater treatment, uh, plant. Basically, the water plant is due for a major update for its, uh, logic and programming, uh, base that controls the plant. We're, we're estimating, um, monies for that at this point. And, uh, ongoing, uh, enhancement of our wastewater treatment plant and, uh, lines going to different entities and communities. Planning for that for August EPA grant. EPA offers another round of grants, and hopefully we'll be able to, uh, get a few to further our new regional distribution system. And, uh, that's it. To keep it short, long meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Canjemy?
I do.
She does.
I would, I would like to clarify what I heard him say, and maybe I know something. Uh, Mr. Canjemy, at the dog park meeting, when they were talking about the $250,000 grant, and I have a note that, that you said, then it needs to be divided up among other city projects. Did I hear that incorrectly?
Mr. Taylor explained it exactly, and that's what I was referring to, because, uh, you two look at the original plan, you talked about the program. We also talked improvements to the roads up to the dog park. Yes, everything is included in DLZ's original estimate of what would cost, so that's what I was referring to, because they were talking about those things like, uh, the grass, the fence, uh, in different buildings, so that's what that meant.
Yeah, and-
Did I clarify enough?
Well, just a second. Under the ODNR paddling enhancement grant, there was a note that said they're currently not accepting applications. So that would be the $75,000 project annually that would be part of the other projects there that isn't available at this time. So how would that be handled?
Uh, I'm sorry, do you hear the question, Sabrina?
Under the ODNR, we were talking about the recreational boating access that is eligible for this $75,000 project annually. According to the ODNR, it's currently not accepting applications. So the $75,000 out of the-
When it comes open, when it becomes open again, we'll apply for it, I believe is what you're wanting me to say.
No, no, no. I thought you were going to use part of the $250,000 to do what they not, are going to do. Is that correct?
I don't recall that. I don't, we'll have to talk about that. I'm, I'm not recalling what you're saying there.
Okay.
And, uh, talking about boating ramps and stuff, we'll be talking with Chief Barber, who basically had to do that, because that's his, that's his Bailey way.
But it's not really a part of the dog park question.
It can be. It was in the original DLZ proposal that was sent out, which, um, that's, yeah. We'll say, we'll talk more about that.
I have a question for him.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
When are you coming back?
My demobilization date is May 17th, which is a Friday, and I should be back on the 20th. Um, I was asked to stay for a year, and I told I couldn't do it. I promised, I promised I might stay another 30 days to train my replacement, so that's what I'm doing here at this point.
Are you being paid?
Of course I'm being paid.
Not by them, by us.
Absolutely by us.
Does, does that not supersede your 60 days?
Uh, you can do the adventure flowers. I'll still have a week left after I come back.
Could I apply for your job?
Yes, sir.
Be a long line.
And you can, and you can have a lot of work to go with it, because if you look at, uh, Jonathan Rowe, he's getting awful gray, working awful hard for us.
Well, if I could work in Hawaii, I'll pay.
And you pay.
You got it.
Two jobs.
Come on, come on down.
Come on down.
Any other questions for the city manager? Thank you, uh, Mr. Canjemi.
Thank you, all of you, you've done a great job, and I just want to say, uh, thirty-two teams showed up on Saturday, over three hundred, uh, players, eight hundred people, basically, were at the park, great success.
Um, moving on to good of the order, Mr. Taylor, would you like to start?
Um, yes, it's, um, it's come to my attention that one of the gentlemen that spoke tonight at, uh, the, uh, during public comments, um, was threatened in the hallway by other citizens, and, uh, he asked if he could have his, uh, address redacted from these
minutes.
From minutes. Well, okay, if we can blank it out even on YouTube.
Um, I'm not sure how to handle that, I think it could be
I just think that if, if that's a viable threat, I don't, you know.
Okay, we'll, we'll look into it and have the city manager handle it.
I would appreciate that, yes, thank you.
Wait, may I make one?
Yes.
I would suggest council considering amending its rules to remove the requirement for the address, um, stating the address just for this precise reason, because you often don't know in advance. Um, of course, it's up to council, and, you know, Nelsonville practices on this, don't need to dovetail with other municipalities, but, um, it's not in the half a dozen other municipalities that I've represented, none of them do that have a requirement, again, it's councils.
I thi- I think we do it just to make sure that their citizens make the comments. So if there's other ways, we could, we could verify that their citizens made the comments, like perhaps have them sign up. Um, uh, I, I remember, and I, I haven't followed council a long time, but I remember that there was a signup sheet, wasn't there, at one point? Where you come in and you sign up to speak, then you put your address on the sheet.
Sure.
And that way it wasn't publicly, it wasn't announced over YouTube and, uh, over, uh, in, in council. And then you could say, uh, Mr. so-and-so, you've got three minutes, Mr. so-and-so, you've got some, that might be something I'd think about doing.
That's a good idea.
For anonymity.
Perfect, okay.
Is the street address actually beneficial for some reason?
To make sure they're citizens.
Citizen of Nelsonville?
Yeah.
Couldn't they just say that, I'm a citizen of Nelsonville?
Well, the, the proof would be their address, and if we didn't think they were citizens, we would, we would be able to check that. And we want to reserve that, the right of citizens to speak, uh, I, I believe. I can't recognize it, I don't have a view. She has a hand up, actually, that's a good idea.
I'm a citizen of Nelsonville, if I get up to talk podium, I really don't feel comfortable giving my exact address out, and I really wouldn't feel comfortable writing it on a piece of paper, because then that person behind me see where I live. I mean, if you got a question of where I live, come to me personally and ask me, I think that's where it should go. I mean, to give your exact address, I think it's very unsafe nowadays.
I'm sure Chief Toll would love to check IDs and
That'd be something we could send over to the district, that's discussed?
Absolutely.
In Nelsonville, you know where someone went, pretty much.
Okay, um, Mr. Lawson?
Uh, the only thing to say is, well, see, we've been getting a lot of stuff done lately, we, we went off with the butter in the city. Uh, citizen comments, uh, we need to be a little more, we are once in a while in our readings. But I think we're moving along good with the Dog Park and everything else, so.
Thank you. Mr. Booth?
Uh, I just wanted to thank the Dog Park Committee for all their hard work and their success, as well as, uh, youth baseball. Uh, I haven't seen Pauley Park filled like that for, for years, and so, uh, congratulations, that's awesome.
I'd like to thank Mr. Edwards for his hard work in, um, finding that money and providing it to the city. Mr. Flowers?
Um, I would like to thank Mrs. Cox for what she's going to be doing on the square with her storytelling, I could tell a few, and, um, and I would also like to remind everybody that, that there's going to be up to forty authors in the Elks, that same event. And they will be signing their books if you want to come in, and that's Monday Creek Publishing, Gina Goodnight. So, uh, she would appreciate your coming in, we're gonna have all kinds of stuff going on here.
Very well, sorry. Go.
Okay, uh, with that, we need an executive session, uh, under
Since I haven't had a chance to review what's in that paper, okay, I think it's appropriate for council to afford to go on the executive session at this meeting, so we can review this. Since no one's had a chance to review it, of its contents, um, I, I don't think, uh, council should go into a session today.
Do you have any other things to discuss?
Wait, either wait or discuss it in a public session, but if, if the concern is because of personnel matters that need to be discussed in the executive session, I would, I would wait.
All right, so with that, we'll, uh, call to adjourn the meeting at nine-thirty-seven.
I'll let you do the, the second one.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Yeah, just as soon as everybody says yes. We're going, absolutely, yes. Video and audit.